Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order. I would ask if anyone's recording, would they make it known? We have a full board this evening minus our associate member who may be late. We'll get started with preliminary business as the board had a chance to review the minutes for July 24th. Two and all yell at once.
Do you sound the noise?
Yep.
There's the new in your packet.
As much as we can find here.
She's good.
Here, here now. Is there a motion on?
Somebody says to all, um...
Is your mic still reading?
Where he read it all, can he? Yep. But from a procedural point, any approval? Um. You hear?
Bob Rogers will be representing the Thatcher Lane and Ken Olivera.
No, no, I mean this one.
Yeah, Bob will do that as well.
He's gonna do that as well. Roger meeting that last Monday, didn't it go?
Went pretty well.
They thought about it about eleven o'clock at night, I remember, but I was gonna go up there.
Do you want to get back to the minutes after the meeting? Take it out of the... Take it out of order.
If you'd like, we can do the minutes after we conclude the other business matters. Next is a bond approval and plan endorsement for Thatcher Lane, did that get...
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bob Rogers, Bob Rogers for GAF Engineering.
Mm-hmm.
I'm certainly here to receive the Form C plans if the planning board is satisfied to endorse them tonight. But I have no information regarding any bonds or covenants. I believe Mr. Cirque just told me the easements have been recorded. I don't have any specific information regarding the surety.
Are the selectmen acting on that this evening?
They are acting on that this evening.
They have a special meeting today?
Yeah, they have a special meeting.
Good evening, Richard M. Cirque. The easements that I was referring to in my conversation with Bob were just having to do with easements over Thatcher Lane extension. Nothing to do with the... Anything further with respect to the plan itself. Do you have a covenant that's gonna be signed or...
I don't, I was, I hadn't received anything. So if the planning board is satisfied, if they're not, they're not, if the planning board has what they need to sign the plans, I would take receipt of them.
Attorney Bowen just entered the room, maybe he can shed some light on... What am I shedding light on? Did the selectmen take action on a approval of surety for Thatcher Lane?
This was the... Reducing it from what, a hundred thousand out of ten?
No, this is a new, a new bond for two hundred and fifty thousand.
I don't remember any two hundred and fifty thousand dollar bonds, so I'd say probably not.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if things are not in order, then, then I just, I don't have any further information.
Was that an insurance bond or...
No, 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 the instruments that I was referring to merely had to do with a confirmatory easement over Thatcher Lane extension for the benefit of Navionics and also for the benefit of the abetting property of Makepeace. And another easement from Navionics to Makepeace, but it had nothing to do with the, with the surety or anything.
Are you familiar with what they're proposing for surety?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
No, he's, he's representing separate interests in this.
Okay.
I'm not representing the developer, I was just representing Makepeace as the butter.
Mr. Chairman, the select and vote on that, so.
Yep.
Okay. How about the modification for Six Recovery Road?
Yes, well, so that is my project. So a year ago, the planning board approved a site plan for Kevin Olivera. This is a very similar project. We filed it as a, as a brand-new site plan review. You know, it's a, it's a larger building, it's a larger piece of land, it's a larger parking lot. And so it was relatively easy for us to redesign it and provide all-new documentation. I submitted it to the planning board office today. We're looking for a public hearing in, in September. We will be, again, considering whether we want to file for an amended order of conditions with Concom or a new, a new notice of intent. But you have everything sufficient to be considered as a new filing, even though it's, it's just about a 2,000 square foot larger building. Still very much the same setup. Centrally located building, two separate offices. Coastal Orthodontics, the owner would be occupying one. And some unknown associated medical dental would occupy the other portion of the building. But we have all new architecture plans, it's different architecture for the building. We have stamped plans from a landscape architect for the, for the landscaping. We have lighting and we have 100% new stormwater management calculations, so.
I reviewed the application and it appears complete.
So we are seeking to set a public hearing date, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, in accordance with the Article 15 Site Plan Review.
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Chairman, is this... He says he's got a bigger lot. What was the reason you had to get more land?
It was a private deci... We didn't have to get it, it was, it was a decision between Mr. Olivera and the, and the landowner. It was, it was a financial decision, basically. And so, once he did have the ability, basically, it went from a little over 30,000 square feet to a little over 40,000 square feet. So, once he was able to acquire that additional land, we, we're just trying to make use of it.
Wasn't it before, was before, increase the size of the lot once?
Right.
Correct, yes. When we came in with the first design, he, he had a P and S of purchase and sales on the property, but he didn't own it. And so, between project approval and acquiring the land, there was a decision made that, that he, he needed... Rather than have a monetary change, they, he got some extra property for them.
Okay, so this is the third round then?
So it's, it's, yeah, so when we, when we came in with the same project and the extra land, asking you to consider it mine here. And so then, so now those lot lines are the same lot lines as the planning board signed in November of last year on a Form A plan, so.
I, I thought it was something different with why they needed the more land, but other than that, I don't...
Yeah, I don't, didn't they lose some land in the back and put it on the side?
No, the, the real lot line never changed. Again, it was just, it was a financial issue with financing for Mr. Olivera.
That's what we were told originally, is that the bank required more, more land in order to approve the loan.
There you go, see, but...
That's what we were told, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well.
Accept the motion, Judge, just set a date?
I would. Wouldn't happen, somebody stole September? We don't need that, are we into it?
No, I don't think so.
Uh, what did...
The 25th.
September 25th would be the earliest.
Seven o'clock?
It's a dental office originally with a land issue. So the basement was used for storage only, could not be...
Six Recovery Road.
But could not be used for office or anything, so.
You've seen all of this?
Yeah, it was, it was fine.
Did you make a motion?
What's the date?
September 23rd.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just continue to check back with Mr. Buckland on Thatcher Lane.
Very good. And now we have the continued public hearing for Bay Point, special permit, site plan review, and definitive subdivision. They're not paying attention, so. And we have our mediator, Attorney Mike Bobrowski with us, and Attorney Rich Bowen just joined us.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the July 24th hearing, I was not here. I've since met with Mr. Buckland, he gave me a tape recording of the, of the meeting, I've reviewed it. I reviewed all the documentation that the attorneys have given to Ken, that he's given to me. So under the, I don't know if it's a policy or a bylaw, but I've adhered to the rule of, of listening to the, of the tape and I'm ready to continue hearing this case.
Thank you. For some, in your packets, you have some draft... Information that some changes were made since the last meeting. And you also have a list of comments from our peer review engineer, Charlie Rowley. I don't know how... This was August 12th, I don't know if there's been any response to any of Charlie's comments by either Attorney Bobrowski or...
I have handed out Charlie's comments to the developer team. And just briefly, Mr. Cirque and I spoke on the way in and he said that they were largely okay.
I haven't talked with my people yet about them, so that was just my own personal view.
I, I'm kind of going through Charlie's right now, and they all make sense to me, so I'm making what changes I can as I was waiting just a second ago. But maybe, let me walk you through what I did here. I, I took notes at the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago and made the changes that I thought everybody agreed to that evening. So the, the new draft was circulated, I think, maybe 10 days ago, it was, on my computer, it was dated the 4th. And it went first to the lawyers, the lawyers had some comments, I incorporated that before I sent it to Ken and Charlie. And then I got comments back from Charlie. So if there are any other comments, that's fine. I did have a couple of things in the decision that... Were highlighted, and that probably means I'm still confused. So maybe we could revisit those. As, as we did last time, if we start with the subdivision plan, or subdivision decision, it's a little bit easier. I think perhaps, if nobody has anything before, what Charlie had to say, he's, he's referring in his first comment in the email I handed out to definitive plan, special condition six. And he suggested a substitute for what I had originally reviewed. So Charlie, maybe you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this... Make sure I got the right one here. Special condition six.
Yeah, I think it was, it was...
Has to do with what everybody was referring to at the last hearing is cleanouts for the existing force main that goes from the pump station to Onset Avenue. I'm talking with Guy Campina from Water Pollution Control, and I tend to agree with him, that simply putting a cleanout the way that you might in a gravity line isn't gonna work, because that line is continually under pressure, which means that anything that flows down that line is gonna go run up into every cleanout. And if it isn't hydraulically sealed and strong enough, it could blow the end cap off and you'd have a mess. So rather than specify particular materials, my suggestion was that it be suitable structures, valves, and abutances for the purpose of inspection and cleaning the force main that would be in compliance with whatever the requirements are that Water Pollution Control would have. It, it'd be something that at the time, it would be sent to Water Pollution for their approval. And that way it would be kind of a cleanout system where if nothing but that line was maintained, and for some reason phases two and three never took place, you've got that installed in place. If it turns out that phases two and three come on board, then of course there's no need for the cleanout in that line, because it's gonna be replaced and relocated anyway. So that was the purpose behind my explanation. With respect to how it gets changed, or how it gets released from whatever the security was for that, I have no problem with the language that was in item six for that, that can be just tacked on. Okay. That was my comment for number six.
Mr. Rowley, is this a new comment and has Tom Principi seen this? He's not with us this evening, he's on vacation, but are we just seeing this now for the, for the first time in this memo?
You're seeing it for the first time, I met with...
Did you communicate that with Mr. Principi?
I'd be happy to send it to him, I have not, no.
Has he? He has not seen it?
No, because at the time that I made the comments, I was responding to the draft decision that I received from Mr. Bobrowski. And at that time I wasn't disseminating anything except to the recipients of that email. But I'll be glad to do that if it's acceptable to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Just a question on the suitable structures. Who would make the determination? Would it be the commissioner of the water sewer department or the director of the Water Pollution Control Facility?
Well, Director of Water Pollution Control is in charge of the sewer department, so it would be his call.
Okay, so that's, that, if we're gonna be clarifying language, that should be part of the, a component of that.
I think it's, it's a suggestion that makes sense, because no matter what this board decided it wanted to do with this, at the end of the day, you have to deal with Guy to hook up to the sewer. And this is something that Guy would want.
So I'm a little... I'm a little concerned that Mr. Principi hasn't seen it, in that, are you gonna want to hold off accepting this as a condition? If we finish our...
I'd like to come back to this last, if that's possible, to continue through this memorandum.
Okay.
And other comments?
Okay, let's take care of Charlie's first and then we'll do mine. Charlie had definitive plan, special condition 12. Such review shall be completed within 45 days, he refers us over to the special permit, item 15, within 45 days of the receipt of the documents. This is for the review of the Homeowners Association documents.
Correct, that's acceptable.
So within 45 days of receipt by the planning board. That's what it says in the other permit, so that's...
Just makes it consistent, one document to the other.
Exactly. Plan list can be streamlined to say 1 through 26. There is a comment here, appropriate other documents such as drainage calculations or impact statements should also be referenced. This is a job I delegate, I don't prepare the document list. Whoever wants to do that is, just yell out.
That's something I can do.
Okay, if you send it to me as a block, I can paste.
Okay.
Oh. That was my concern, that we have a complete set of plans that are accurate, that we can actually reference by date or revision number or...
Now, this is what I, this is what I received under documents referenced earlier, and I just blocked and pasted it. So if somebody wants to make a more elaborate list, have at it.
Does anybody know if Mr. Principi has organized and corrected the plans since we last met, where we discussed with him how some of the sheets did not match up?
Those corrections were made and they were sent to Mr. Rowley. So the plans that you have are dated April 14th, it's a complete and full set. At our last meeting, you asked for a striping plan to be adjusted.
Corrected, yes.
Both of those sheets were corrected and sent to Mr. Rowley.
Perfect.
In addition to that, I believe Mr. Principi sent Mr. Rowley additional information on driveway profiles.
He did. Yeah, 'cause I remember...
So you have a complete 100%...
Yeah, 'cause they didn't match up, 'cause they were, I think, different dates or something.
Yes, and we corrected that.
Just, just to be clear, though, those plans were sent to me as a PDF, eight and a half by elevens, all I can receive. So through Ken's office, you need to receive copies of those, just standard sheets that will be incorporated into the final set.
Yeah, Mr. Principi said he would correct, so that sheets, S2 made it up with those...
Mr. Rowley, did you review the corrections that he made and were they acceptable?
As far as I could tell, there were some adjustments that were made on those first two sheets, and then the road profile plans that he provided for the driveways. I commented back to him on one of them. And then he sent me a revised copy of the plan again with the second driveway, which I had asked for. And so long as he submits that plan as a full-size, say supplemental sheet to the profiles that are in this set, that's acceptable to me. It accomplished what I wanted to see, and that was that the grades were good, and it needed some adjustment, so it's a good thing they got done.
All right, as long as we have an identifiable set that we can approve and sign off on, that's my concern.
And then in, in comment number four, Charlie's saying that he thinks it's a good idea that the driveways be given names.
The reason for that is that a lot of the buildings that are on those driveways do not have frontage on Starved Drive, or I keep saying Starved, I mean Bay Point Road. Anybody going in there for emergency services, either the police or fire or ambulance, they're gonna be looking for something on Bay Point Road, they're not gonna be looking for something on a driveway. And at the same time, the 911 coordinator is probably gonna wanna see that too. Doesn't matter whether it's a laid-out street or whether it's a driveway such as these, they should be given names so that they can have an address.
I, I, personal opinion, have experienced numerous occasions where prior to us, one of the street names in the condominium development is Bay Point Drive Extension. We have fire trucks come to the pavilion building frequently, looking for 19 Bay Point Drive, which is our address, where there's events that take place in the condominium development. We've got one gentleman who must have a cellar full of Titleist drivers, because Titleist only goes to his home in the condominium development, they don't come to the pro shop. It's really confusing, and to further confuse our emergency system by, by saying we should name a driveway, but we don't make it a road, is just gonna add to a level of confusion that I worry about. I, I worry about that type of comment in a development like this.
I, I would expect to see a sign posted at each one and each one of the ends of those roads that would say, this is...
Well, if it's a shared driveway, not every single...
We reviewed it with the emergen... with EMS, the fire department has signed off on it. They have provided the appropriate documentation, and they don't have an issue with it.
I'm suggesting the 911 coordinator may, he's with the police department. And the least amount of confusion you can have for that kind of a situation, the better, because minutes count. And if there's something on Bay Point Drive that's actually up at the end of that cul-de-sac, who's gonna know? Nobody's gonna know. To give it a simple name and a street sign...
We can have signage with appropriate, to be appropriate, and the numbers on the condominium units themselves will be large enough where they can be identified. I think if you, if you have an emergency situation, they shouldn't be looking for the driveways, they should be looking for the unit and the unit number.
They will be looking, first of all, for a place where those are, and if they're traveling up and down Bay Point Drive, looking for that number, it's gonna take them time to...
Signage, signage with the numbers.
Yes.
At the driveways?
A simple...
Twenty-three to twenty-seven and an arrow.
A simple street sign at the intersection says that it's XYZ Street, and you give that a number off that street, and you find, there's no confusion as to whether it's Bay Point Drive or it's something else. And it does not matter whether it's a driveway or whether it's a road.
Attorney Bowen?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a couple of points, one cynical but one public spirit. I'll make the cynical one first. I don't think this sort of comment is the rock upon which a development should founder. And the level of animation that I'm hearing is not appropriate to where we are. Okay, so there's my cynical point. My, my public safety spirited point is this. I spent the better part of the last two years working with the chairman of the board of selection, the town clerk, a street acceptance committee, the dispatchers, I know Charlie helped out on that. I'll tell you, it's a, the, the business of street naming is a god-awful mess. And, you know, personally, I endorse what Charlie is saying here, because we've had to go through and change so many street names, where we have, you know, extensions, ways, you know, subversions of already named streets, that if you can come up with some different name, put it on a sign, please do, it'll save somebody's life.
Yeah, and I think the 911 coordinators are the ones that have to deal with it, and I think if they can...
I've just been dealing with police dispatchers. Gets horrible.
I know.
Bearberry. Gets horrible.
I would suggest Mediation Way and Settlement Drive.
Amen, brother.
Sounds good to me. Need a motion?
No, I mean, to me, whether you... For one thing, it wouldn't be all the driveways, it would just be shared driveways.
It would, it would be this, there's one loop road with individual little driveways off of it. Every, every building will have a street number then. You've got one individual road that goes into a cul-de-sac for a couple of 300 feet, whatever it is, and there are multiple buildings on that. So you'd have a total of three street signs that you'd have to post.
Let's see, either...
Does the emergency system use a GPS? If I am a number and a road, for my address, will it take me to that house?
I have no idea what most people use for actual location purposes at this point.
Would be open to mitigation funds, but the office, office put one in, but that's on the table. Like, street sign might be less expensive.
Well, I mean, even if you just directed it...
I, so here's, here's the reason for the conversation. This has been a driveway throughout, Mr. Rowley has wanted it to be a road. We did not want it to be a road, these are driveway specs. We have done additional work, we've done road profiles, Mr. Principi, I believe, has responded to each of your requests. And now, on the evening of, we're changing it to, well, let's just make it a road... to, well, let's just make it a road, give it a road name, and then all of a sudden it's a road. And roads that aren't roads, to me, are more confusing than an address with a house number and the name of a street that it's on. And if they happen to have a shared driveway, I think that's perfectly acceptable.
Two numbers at the edge of that driveway. It's very straightforward.
So, we certainly will identify the homes and the addresses. Every time you hear, "Well, the street should have a name, but it's not really a street. The street should have a name, but it's not a laid-out street." I find that to be concerning.
I think it could-
They're driveways.
I think it- I think with signage directing people that those house numbers are down this way-
Sure. That we absolutely will do.
Is a simple solution.
I thought the request was to name, give it a street name, but don't have it be a laid-out street. To me, that's a challenge. That doesn't- So, we're happy to include signage with house numbers and directions.
So, could you say that again?
Where you would normally put a street sign, you would just put the houses that share that loop, the numbers forty-three through fifty-seven with an arrow. So, the ambulance coming in-
Happy to do that.
The UPS guy, everybody knows where those are.
And you can cover that with two signs?
The signs are nice and they're clear.
Oh, three separate signs?
You have a loop road through one, same sign on each end of the loop.
Okay.
And then at the little short cul-de-sac street, there'd be a simple sign there.
Yeah.
So, this is Baypoint Drive.
Richard, what is the loop road?
So, there would be a street sign here.
Yep.
The other end of the loop, and a simple street sign there.
What's a street mean? There's a real need, so those will be need. Mr. Rowley, what is the loop road that you're referring to?
It's on, partially on sheet eight and-
You have a name, you could tell. That's what I was thinking. On the plan there, it's Village Green South.
It's on sheet eight and sheet nine.
No, actually, Village Green South as a whole is phase two.
Actually, most all of it shows on sheet eight.
So, you're talking about the shared driveway portion? That's what you're referring to as a loop road? Or are you actually talking about the road that loops around here?
I'm talking about the road that loops around.
So, that's a named road?
It's-
No, it's not. No, it's not. It's called, it says on the plan, "Proposed driveway." The road you're talking-
If it's a named road, let's just call it what you named it right around the plan and move to the next point.
It's not a drive, it's not Beacon.
Okay.
It's the portion that's up near Cahoon. There's a loop there.
Up by the condominiums.
Is that in the section known, I think it's parcel B, is it?
Yes. It's parcel B.
In parcel B, there's a loop in and out.
Jim's standing in front of it. What do you see?
This is Baypoint Drive, okay? Here's Cahoon.
Yeah, that's one. That's two.
Here's the loop.
Yeah.
And over here's the little short one.
John.
That's good.
Where's the little short one off the chain?
Are you gonna say anything to that?
Where is it saying, on Baypoint?
It's off of that.
And over here would be the substance.
Those are off of Baypoint. Right? Oh, okay. Oh, it's on that road.
If you're on Beacon, it's off on Baypoint.
I think a nice sign with the numbers is fine.
Mr. Chairman, we'll do appropriate signage that meets Mr. Rowley's concerns.
Well, I'm gonna just suggest that we add a condition that says that you will install three signs to provide driveway addresses for private drive, for units located on driveways prior to the issuance of any CO on a private driveway.
That's fine.
And looking back at my notes to myself here, I just had some things that I highlighted, but I don't think we have any disagreement about them. The planning board will be able to determine whether there's changes that are substantial or insubstantial. Insubstantial changes do not require a planning board public hearing. Substantial changes mean a new public hearing pursuant to chapter forty-one, section eighty-one W, as we are tonight. Then I had something also highlighted that said, I just made a new condition at the end on street lighting, which shall comply with section four D, Roman numeral four D, and locations are already in the plan, I'm informed. Those were the only two things I had. I don't know how you wanna do this. Do you wanna take the decision, the decisions together after we talk about the site plan and special permit, or do you wanna take action on the subdivision plan now?
Any preference from the board?
Could I just ask a couple quick questions?
Sure.
I did read the documents, but I'm not an attorney, so I was just wondering, how and how was the language confirmed for the Baypoint Drive and Cahoon Street updates that were originally part of phase one, but maybe deferred to phase two and three because it makes sense? I didn't quite understand that language in the agreements that I read.
Point me where-
Well, that's the problem. I wasn't quite sure where I should see it. I just know that Baypoint Drive and Cahoon Street are pending updates and resurfacing as part of phase one's project.
That would be special condition five.
And I guess my question was, has it been addressed to the approval of town council and the applicant to make sure that it is addressed, but that there is dates, certain dates of required performance, and also financial guarantees and things of that nature?
Well, condition five says as part of phase one, Baypoint shall repair and maintain in good and passable condition Baypoint Drive from its intersection with onset to Cahoon and Cahoon easterly to the end of the project as a temporary measure prior to the commencement of any repairs. Existing conditions shall be documented. Baypoint will schedule the initial inspection with the planning board or its designee. Prior to completion of phase one, all of Baypoint and Cahoon shall be full-depth reconstructed. There is a condition in general conditions, I think it's number one, that says prior to commencement, or prior to endorsement, Baypoint shall provide a suitable performance guarantee.
Right.
You're not even endorsing the plan until you're assured that you have an adequate performance guarantee. So, that should be work that's-
Okay.
-in the mix for the amount that you extract for the performance bond.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So, with my notes, if there's, is there any more discussion?
Are we just going to insert the reference dates for the plan set at some point, or?
I always like to do this. It's easy. If I were a member of the board and I was gonna make a motion, it would be to approve the definitive subdivision plan as written, subject to the following changes, which I will make overnight and send Ken in the morning. The first is Charlie's comment, special condition six. The second is Charlie's comment with regard to special condition twelve. Those are on the sheet I handed out. A complete document list shall be inserted. And the fourth thing is that prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for a unit on a shared driveway, the applicant shall install three signs to provide driveway addresses for units located on that private driveway.
Could I ask a couple more questions? You did mention town's peer review consultant, but like in part ten, eleven, shouldn't it be consultants, since the landscape architect is also representing the town of Wareham? So, I think consultant should be plural, and I think the landscape architect might be referenced as a, or included. And my other question is on eighteen, upon completion of road construction, an as-built plan shall be submitted to the building department, Department of Municipal Maintenance-
I think that's in the-
In the planning board. My other, my part of that question is-
That's in the special permit, isn't it, Mike?
Subdivision plan approval.
Okay.
And my question for that is, shouldn't that also say that that-
Oh, I see.
-as-built plan will be recorded? So, when it's submitted to each of the departments, will also be recorded?
I don't know that you're recording it.
That doesn't have to be recorded?
It doesn't. And where did you see the reference to the consultants, Mike?
Item, item ten, eleven. Did, it referenced Mr. Rowley, or the town's peer review consultant, but I thought maybe it should be plural, because I think we have more than one consultant assisting the town.
Great. I'll add that to ten and eleven, and make that the fifth change as part of that hypothetical motion I might make.
And just another question, a point. At our last meeting, we talked about units one and two and their layout, and I didn't know, 'cause I haven't seen a plan, if that was changed for the access to the driveways not being right on Cahoon.
There's been no, there's been no changes to the plans-
Okay.
-that I'm aware of, Mike.
And then my other question is, where the, some of the residences were ten foot eight inches, and I know we talked about changing that, were those changed?
That's in the other decision.
I know, but I just wanna get it out now, 'cause I wanna understand what I'm approving and what I'm voting on. And if things like that aren't changed, then that may influence how I vote.
Was the comment again?
There's a few residences that are ten foot eight inches, and when we talked last, Mr. Bobrowski suggested that those be changed, and somewhat agreed with our point. And I'm wondering, have they been changed? And unit one and two is a safety issue for me, and I know that we've talked about a number of times, but I do think that there's enough traffic on that road, so that that could be a dangerous situation for units one and two. And as referenced in Mr. Bobrowski's documents, safety is certainly a priority. So, I'm not comfortable with one and two. As I stated months ago.
I think we had, twenty-four is the condition in the special permit on page eight. So, it's special condition twenty-four. Talks about the houses.
Yes. It does, but it doesn't, since we haven't seen the plans, I don't know if those residences that were ten foot eight inches have been revised or changed.
They have not been. We have not revised or changed anything since our last meeting with respect to any of the layout documentation, other than the two striping plans that had inconsistencies to them.
And that's because you don't wish to, or you are waiting for some type of discussion?
If I can respond to that, I think it's premature, because it depends upon the ultimate style of a particular structure and the location of the structure. The purpose of the language in the decision is to set parameters-
Right.
...below which you cannot go.
Right.
And that's as many corners as we can see around at the present time. But when it comes to deciding the style of a structure and the location of a structure, the decision will set the ground rules in terms of how close they can be to one another and so forth. So, depicting it on a plan might be worth little more than the paper it's printed on, because we just don't know how big the structures will be and where they'll be. That's why we talked in terms of large lots and condominium ownership, rather than individual lots and fee ownership.
So, based on the documents you see, the minimum distance will be twenty feet. Is that what you're saying to me?
No.
Look at the language in the special permit decision. At the last meeting, I think Charlie identified three units that were closer than twenty feet. There were two at ten feet eight inches, and there was one at sixteen. So, what this says is that if they are already closer than twenty feet-
Right.
-they can't get any closer than what it shows on the plan now.
Right.
If it's more than twenty feet-
Right.
-they can't go any closer than twenty feet.
That's exactly how I understand it. So, back to my point, ten feet eight inches doesn't meet any standards that are acceptable to me. So, that, again, sways my vote.
Right. I'm with you. Twenty feet is twenty feet.
We all sit here and make our decisions.
And there's only, there are three, right? Yeah, I think, I remember that from my notes.
Well, it appears that we're gonna discuss both decisions at the same time.
Well, we're at least gonna discuss this condition, that's for sure.
I mean, I thought that at the last meeting, you had made a good point, that those residences might be better served if they were moved around a little bit now, because you do have, in your language, the ability to reduce distances. But they must meet a minimum standard. And my opinion is ten foot eight or fifteen feet don't meet a minimum standard. So, I thought that, based on your suggestion at the last meeting, that they were gonna revise those.
I think my suggestion was voluntary. It wasn't mandatory.
Okay.
And you can see that they didn't volunteer.
Yeah. There are four units that I see, twenty-nine and thirty, fifty-six and fifty-seven.
And what is the distance, Charlie?
Ten-point-eight feet separation between each of them.
Numbers again, Charlie, twenty-nine?
Between twenty-nine and thirty, it's ten-point-eight feet. And between fifty-six and fifty-seven, it's ten-point-eight.
I think there's another one, too, at about sixteen feet.
And are those, are those-
There are a number of.
Are those garage to garage, or unit to unit?
It appear to be garage to garage.
Garage to garage, okay.
I did make, if you remember, I did make a comment about that at the last meeting, that with that ten-foot space, if people are parked in their driveways, it's gonna be hard for somebody to back around and get that space that they need to get turned around and get out of the driveway that Mike is concerned about. Stand width, aisle width, on any double-parked place is like twenty-four feet. Now, you've got two parking spaces that are only ten-point-eight feet apart.
I believe some, if not all of those items, those locations you cite, have more than enough room on the other end of the building to just push them apart a little bit.
Yes. There's between thirty and thirty-one, thirty-two, there's sixty-one feet. Between fifty-seven and fifty-eight, there's forty-five point two. Between fifty-six and fifty-five, there's forty-point-one. I gotta check on twenty-nine. I don't know what that one is.
But to Mr. Page's point, I think if you're gonna hug one line, it should be on the garage to garage side, not the occupant.
There isn't anything on the other side of twenty-nine. It's the last lot on Baypoint at the curve, so. It's just those four that have the ten-point-eight. There are some that are at fourteen.
How many?
It's on that same sheet.
This one?
Seventy-seven and seventy-eight, they're duplexes. Uh, seventy-seven and seventy-eight, they're duplexes. But the distance between the nearest units, seventy-seven and seventy-eight is fourteen point four. And it's just those two buildings that I see.
I remember three.
Uh, there is another one, I'm, between sixty-four and sixty-five, that's twelve point five.
Right.
Everything else is twenty or better than I see.
Right here.
Yeah, fifteen point six on fifty-two and fifty-three.
So-
Couldn't move that one because of that.
Right.
So you can't move that one.
But that, that's, I'm looking at sixty-four and sixty-five right now with Mr. Bowlen. Driveway separation there is not so much of a problem because they've got separate driveways that are quite a bit apart and they're staggered. And the driveway for, say, between fifty-two and fifty-three- is wider than the others.
You don't-
Gives you a little bit more space, it isn't like ten, it's fifteen.
So I, I think my question is, is, is there the ability to put language into the agreements that there will be a minimum distance?
Depends on what your minimum distance is.
This is side plan.
Ten foot eight is not it.
That's where it states, subject to further approval by the-
But they're garage to garage. The ten foot eight. Page you said?
This is the second page.
Not just a question of the, of distance, you also have, if there's one where it's, there's a twelve foot eight separation, but the garages are staggered, so if you just simply said, well, you could use twelve point eight and not have a problem, but if you say made it fifteen, you wouldn't necessarily be improving the one with the twelve eight because it's already staggered and you don't have the same safety issue. So-
I mean, I, I don't think that this is a new discussion. This is a discussion that's been going on since mediation, so-
Yeah, but there's not that many-
To banter it back and forth is a little disappointing at this point for me.
There's not many properties really affected by this, so-
You know, the, the reality of this project is, the applicant owns all of the acreage. Should they decide to make it larger, they can do that. Should they decide to make it smaller? So I think that minimum standards need to be met. If this applicant was landlocked, that would be a completely different discussion. But this applicant is not landlocked.
All I'm suggesting is, I, I agree with what you said. All I'm suggesting is that this is not a widespread infectious problem throughout the whole project. Really, on the ten foot eight issue, we're dealing with two clusters for a total of four properties. So in the spirit of what you said, how do we deal with those two clusters and add a bit to them?
I mean, we, we want to offer flexibility to the applicant as they've asked for designs. You know, put unit A here, B there. Originally, the planning board had asked that each unit be marked at which style it was. Evidently, that's been put under the rug. So I think there has to be minimum standards of setbacks in order to make sure that the subdivision looks appropriate and is safe.
Sure. Well, take, take my point here, we're dealing with two clusters of buildings with the-
In those two cases?
Ten foot eight issue.
Right.
And you're saying, put in minimum standards, agreed. What minimum standard would you suggest that would address those two, I'll call them problem clusters, but wouldn't completely upset the apple cart with respect to the rest of the development? So I mean, that's-
I'm not sure, but I thought that those standards-
With respect to that, to say you've raised the issue-
Right.
You're saying there should be a standard.
There should be.
You've reviewed the plan, the plan is in front of you, the issue is now down to two clusters. Give us your standard. It's on you.
I understand that, but those standards were pre-designed.
No, 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 no.
No, they, they are in writing.
It's on you.
Yeah, but-
We're here-
But Mr. Bowlen, those, those standards are in writing from the original mediation meetings.
No.
I'm not making those up now.
No, I knew you were going to run.
Those were discussed.
The, the genesis of this was we came to agreement on a concept plan that had no numbers on it. And when the applicant submitted the eighty-one W plan, they put numbers on it. So what was agreed to in concept by the board and the applicant now has some hard numbers and it's just that you don't like the number because it's ten feet eight inches. And you couldn't have told that before because it didn't have a scale or a number attached to it. So there isn't really a standard, if you're, I, one of the nicest projects I know of in my town is called Concord Riverwalk and the houses are probably from me to Charlie to each other. And it sold like hotcakes in the mid-sixes. And they're small houses, they're only about fifteen hundred square feet. So cities don't require the buildings to be twenty feet apart or-
Right.
-you wouldn't have a city. So that, it's, it's really what you think is appropriate and safe. Because otherwise, it's buyer's selection.
Right.
They don't want to live next to somebody ten feet eight inches away, they won't.
Right.
And what I'm trying to say is, you've identified something that, for you, is a problem. It's not a problem that's prevalent through the whole development.
Right. That's right.
And if the condition of your approval of this plan is coming up with a minimum standard with respect to those two, I'll call them problem areas, let's hear it.
What's safe? What distance is safe? I don't know, I'm not an engineer.
There, I don't think there is a safety standard here.
I'm talking about, as Mr. Rowley's mentioned, you know, if the vehicles are side by side or however, you know, what is, what is appropriate and what is safe for these people to-
That's the driveway, not the proximity, that's, that's not the buildings close to each other, that's the driveway. What's the problem there, Charlie? I don't even understand the driveway issue.
If there, if we were to draw a vehicle to scale-
Yeah.
-between fifty-six and fifty-seven.
Yeah.
And there's a vehicle parked here-
Yeah.
And a vehicle parked here. If this person has a vehicle here, how does this guy get out?
Yeah.
If you look at these over here, fifty-two and three, where you've got fifteen, six, you've got a little bit more wiggle room.
Yeah.
If you look at the one where you've only got twelve feet between buildings, you've got a different driveway configuration altogether, which does not become a problem for getting out.
Can the driveway configuration be changed on fifty-six and fifty-seven so that one of them is on, for example, to the, to the right of fifty-seven? Could the driveway go there?
If the, if the buildings were set back a little bit further to where you could splay the driveway, you could do it. You wouldn't have to change your building design. You've got forty feet between it and the next one, you've got forty-five here.
Yeah.
So they could be splayed out a little bit or even separated a little bit together.
Yeah, but I've asked for it.
It, it doesn't have to be ten.
I've asked ten times.
It could be a little bit more. The same with this one, because this one's on a corner lot, this-
Five feet over.
This lot comes down here like this.
He's got sixty-one, isn't he?
So this building sits in here and it's got room to the lot.
Footage.
So that could slide too.
And, and Charlie, if you look here, you know, the, the openings to the street here are comparatively wider-
Yes.
-than they are here. And, and so you also could address the safety issue by just having the opening to the, the way. Wide, as wide as here as it is there, 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 there and everywhere else.
You could, you could make it come straight out with a return here-
Yeah.
And straight down with a return there, which gives it all this extra width-
Perfect.
-where they can back and turn around.
Yep.
Charlie? Is it also fair to say that a buyer could come in and say, I like this location, but I don't want to be ten feet from my neighbor?
Yeah, they won't buy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's where the flexibility of that particular item in your special permit comes in. If things get, want to get shifted a little bit here and there.
Excuse me. Hearing Mr. Fitzgerald and your conversation, and points are valid, but why couldn't some of the buildings move a bit to increase the separation?
So-
Number-
Part of what we're doing is getting the flexibility to do that. We've traveled this road before, where we have a final set of plans that everyone has reviewed through mediation, signed off through mediation. Mr. Rowley, Mr. Prinsby, myself met four times with six different letters addressing different concerns. We're anxious to bring this to conclusion and we will have that flexibility to make those field adjustments at the time that we're doing this. And we're perfectly willing to do it. What we, what we struggle doing at this point is responding to a query without a specific suggestion.
Well, I understand, but it seems to me that the, we're stuck on a discussion somewhat arbitrary, but based in fact that you have ten point eight feet between two buildings, which could be expanded if, if one building moved over five feet.
Yes, it could.
Does five feet solve the problem?
And what would we like it to be expanded to, I believe is the question that's being asked.
Leave that up to the, to the designer. I mean, if, if these were three, if these were three dimensional views, you, you could make that determination.
Sure.
But-
Okay, then, then it ought to be proposed.
Sure, how about sixteen, eighteen feet? I mean, some, to, to, to satisfy the concern of the parking, the visual.
If it were sixteen, if it were sixteen feet, would that be acceptable to Mr. Fitzgerald? So let's stop talking about it and let's talk sixteen feet in this condition. And, um, and just as a note, a person-
Hold on, just to address Mr. Fitzgerald's concern. Mr. Fitzgerald is going to want to see, Mr. Fitzgerald, very formal. Mike is going to want to see something, and don't give me that look, Mike is going to want to see something on a plan that says sixteen feet. Right?
Well, when it's completed, not, not now. I mean, Mr. Faye's got the flexibility to move things.
Okay, I just want to make sure-
But I, I thought in these agreements, there should be a minimum standard.
Okay, and I'm with you. So, I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead.
And the minimum standard is sixteen feet.
I, I would assume that that is safe, yes.
And write that in accordingly.
Okay, I'll, we'll cover that when we get to the special permit because that's where the condition is. But prior to endorsement, the plan will be modified to show no building separation less than sixteen feet. And then that paragraph has other conditions that remain intact.
All right, so does that eliminate the twenty-foot?
So we're back to the subdivision decision, Mr. Chairman.
Make it, make it sixteen feet.
And just to review, there are five changes, at least so far. One is Charlie's special condition six, two is Charlie's special condition number twelve, three is a complete document list four, the three signs to provide driveway addresses and change the word consultant in general condition ten and eleven to plural. I don't have anything else. If anybody had anything else, speak up.
This is a public hearing, so I would open it up for public comment if I could. Would you come forward and identify yourself, sir?
Hi, my name's Michael Bessie, I'm from Onset in the town of Wareham. And it's nice to come before you tonight, Mr. Chairman and Lord. My question that I'm bringing before you, Long Neck Road goes from Main Ave in Riverside through the golf course and comes out on Onset Avenue near Robinwood Road. The road, as near as I've been able to find out from all town records, has not been rescinded. There are a number of parcels on Long Neck Road referred to in the assessor's plan, referred to in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. And Long Neck Road, where it comes out on Onset Avenue, is bounded by a Wareham highway bound. So it appears to have been accepted by the town. My question to you, as a past member of the planning board, we were not allowed to lay a plan over an existing way. And it would appear from assessor's maps two, three, nine and ten, which is mostly the golf course, that Long Neck Road is still there, it's still laid out on their plans. The assessors have reference to the parcels as being on Long Neck Road. I, I don't know how that affects whatever you're planning to do, but those properties being there, being worked by the town and in the registry of deeds, and you're about to either lay condos on them, on parts of it, or approve an eighty-one P in the middle of a way. I don't know how you're going to address it.
Attorney Bowen?
Well, yeah, I'll certainly defer to others on it, but did you have, did you look at the book of accepted ways in the town clerk's office? And let me ask, I'll tell you why I'm asking that question, because the only document in town hall that reflects the status of a public way is the town clerk's street acceptance book. And whatever notations are on property record cards have no legal consequence whatsoever as to the actual status of the way. So that's just my question.
All right, today, when I went to the clerk's office and asked if they had a official layout of the road, I wanted to know if it was an accepted way. The girl in the office said, yes, it was an accepted way.
Pass the notes in class. Mr. Chairman? I, I'm not sure where the road location is, perhaps you can point it out on the map. But if the road has not been accepted by the town, obviously, no developer is going to want to- regardless of whether the road has been or has not been accepted by the town, no developer, if there are rights of persons to possibly use it, no developer will want to build on top of it in order to block people who have the right to use it. So the, the question is not so much whether it exists, but the question instead is whether there's anything proposed to be built upon it. And that's why I wanted to know where it, where it is.
Well, it would appear, and again, I don't know off the top of my head where the layout is, but it would appear that a golf course is built on top of it, so. It appears as though a golf course is built on top of it.
Well, no, what I'm talking, I'm talking about any above-surface structures.
I, I know what you mean, but-
Yeah.
But is it taken by the town of Wareham some long time ago to do the golf course? Is this, I don't know-
I don't know the answer to that. Charlie?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, where that would be. This is absurd, isn't it?
There was a, there was a proposed layout of Long Neck Road and Kahoon Road extension back in nineteen forty-two, nineteen forty-one. Says revision two.
I'm just trying to get-
Nineteen forty-two. My father did. I know that it started at Main Avenue and went in for a ways past Riverside and went through the Cranberry Boggs at the back there and so forth. Mr. Lipsitz, who was the surveyor of record for this property and did the altar survey, makes reference to the plan, but he does not show the layout going across this property. I do not know whether or not during the course of the time between forty-two and today, what portion of that may have been, this Englishman, this continued. It would, it would take some research to find that. Portion of it still exists over on Main Avenue, that I'm sure, but I think it may have stopped prior to the golf course. But I can't tell you- may have stopped prior to the golf course, but I can't tell you. And Mr. Lipsitz, back in, when he surveyed the plan and he, he made a statement that it shows the lines of existing ownerships, doesn't show any layout. So, I assume he researched it enough to know. I can't tell you definitively myself from my own research perspective.
Done it 15 times, that's about it, so disappointing.
All, all I can say from a title examination point of view is that it's not at all uncommon to see tracts of land traversed by cart paths, and determining who the universe of persons is who have the right to use those cart paths is quite an onerous task, and because of that fact, you cannot say that rights to use those cart paths have been eliminated, and therefore, you make certain that nothing above the surface is built over those cart paths, so that if anybody shows up and wanting to use the cart path, they can do so without bumping into a structure.
There are at least two cases, Mr. Chairman, in the realm of subdivision control law that say that it is not the business of the planning board to determine property disputes between contending parties. One of them indeed had a plan in front of it in which there were roadways that were of some ancient origin, and a butters came and said, slow down. But the, there's only one case that I know of. Those, that, those cases are Holliston Sportsman's Club and HAHN, H-A-H-N. There's a third case, which is distinguishable, in which the developer showed access via a town road, but it wasn't a town road that you and I could drive on, it was more like a well, a water well road that nobody really had access to. And that was a case in which the court said, that's just off the charts, you, you can't build the subdivision because of that, whereas what you're seeing with this question is more like, if it happens, it happens, but it's not, you're not the land court. That's the point.
But could, could the town be held liable if, if they don't pay attention to this possible situation?
The town, if, if the town has an, an interest in the roadway, then when they go to build it, they'll have to get permission from the Board of Selectmen acting as road commissioners or the highway superintendent, to the extent that job's been delegated. But it's, it's, it's not at all uncommon that you would have a, a public road be improved as part of a subdivision, but you need permission to get into the road. Nobody can walk into the roadway and start digging it up and making it better.
Mr. Chairman, I was able to pull up a copy of the street acceptance list maintained by the town clerk, and there is a way by the name of Long Neck Road that is found on that list. What the list does not give you is the scope of the layout of the road, so you are unable to tell just by examining the list to what extent Long Neck Road traverses into the property that's the subject of the law. Now, as to the question of liability, the, Mr. Robrowski has cited the case law. What I can tell you is that certainly with all this disclosure and the gentleman's comments from the public, the developer proceeds at his own risk if this board gives him favorable consideration. He's aware of the issue. You are not waiving any of the town's property rights, should you approve it, and it would become a private matter between the developer and the parties who have an interest in the way.
At the end of the Holliston Sportsman's Club, the Supreme Judicial Court said, if the plaintiff does succeed in establishing a prescriptive right over the land of the applicant, the planning board will have to reckon with that right at that time, but, but not now. It's, in, in the prior sentence, it says, only one of the matters complained of is even within the competence of the planning board, and that's not, doesn't include that one, so.
How does that personally affect a gentleman raise the issue? Because if there were ever an issue down the line, we'll have a copy of this tape to say, hey, you were warned.
So...
If there were an issue.
Well, as you stated, the Long Neck Road does exist, but what that description is, what was ever accepted is another matter, and it would behoove the applicant to...
If it's accepted.
Find out what that was.
But if it's accepted, isn't there a plan? If it's listed on the town records, Mr. Bowen, wouldn't there be a plan, even back to 1942?
Not necessarily.
There was.
Yeah, no, no, just as a general matter, not necessarily. I've, I've spent quite a bit of time going through this list, not as much time as some others have, who may be listening.
And if there is no plan, how can one determine location?
There is a plan.
Oh, there is a plan?
Yeah.
I, I'm pretty sure that there was. The question remains, how much of it was accepted by the town? There are layouts out there that were prepared for the town but never went followed through with the full procedure to become accepted, but I'm pretty sure that that piece of it that's out near Onset, Main Avenue, was accepted. When I was doing survey work, I found monuments out there for the town layout, and I believe Mr. Bessie said that he found one on Onset Avenue. Those monuments may have been set at that time, but that doesn't mean that the layout exists today. That's something that would have to be researched at the town clerk's records to go into town meeting votes and see if there was something you could find where something was rescinded or discontinued, or a portion of it. Chances are, there was a description, because that's the way that they used to do those.
Did Mr. Bessie find a plan?
I did find a plan in the town clerk's office.
So, it's readily available?
Yes. It's in three books. If you go to the clerk's office and ask for Long Neck Road, it's in three books.
Here's the wording from the Holliston, the HAHN case from Stoughton. "The plaintiffs proffer a number of challenges to the board's action based on an alleged easement held by the town in a road to muddy pond. There were conflicting affidavits as to the existence of the easement. We need not recount the substance, because the existence or nonexistence of the easement does not in this case undercut the decision of the board. As noted by one of its members, the planning board is not authorized to determine the existence of easements or to settle other property disputes." It cites the Holliston Sportsman's Club case. "Thus, the board's action does not affect the status of any easement the town may have," meaning that if it turns out that there is one, that's for them to deal with later, but not for you to deal with tonight.
My, my opinion as town council is that you do not have the jurisdiction to entertain the question raised by the member of the public.
Okay.
Well, my only question, was there any additional research that this board needed to hear? What I'm hearing is no, that it's up to the applicant to research their ownership.
Okay.
So, with that, I guess I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan before you.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing, please, on the definitive subdivision plan. I'm not sure if there's a reference number, but as presented.
As amended this evening.
With, with adjustments.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds unanimous. And next, I would be looking for a motion. Maybe...
For the, was that to close the public hearing, or was that...
Yes, that was to close the public hearing.
Okay. Well, so, if, I, I'll refresh everybody's memory, the motion, to the extent that the board wishes to move to approve with conditions, it would be as written with the following five changes: Charlie's comment on special condition six, on special condition 12, a complete document list to be inserted, three signs to be installed prior to the issuance of a CO for any unit on a shared driveway, and a minor change to general conditions 10 and 11 to reflect your many consultants rather than just one, so plural. Those are the changes I had.
That's, that's, that's exactly how I was gonna say it.
There you go.
Say a second. Discussion. Hearing none? I would ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? So moved. Can I get an amen?
Amen.
No, but you can take out your site plan special permit.
Exactly.
Charlie had some comments on this one as well. And I'm gonna look. Yeah. So, Charlie's first comment, same email, bottom of the page, same block and paste exercise with regard to the document list. Number two, I, I agree that two and three should be taken together, and I have already edited that to say, the board makes the following findings pursuant to the two sections, 590.2 and 15.10. I think you can now avoid Charlie's fourth point, because I've taken out the word determination and made it a finding. And change, general conditions, first paragraph, line six, changes which in the opinion of the planning board are minor and not substantial may be reviewed and approved by the planning board. What does it say now, Charlie, or its agent?
Yeah. I just felt that it, it was really up to the board to determine whether or not they were substantial or not. I have all faith and can myself, but we may not always be.
So, that would be on page four of the decision, under general condition one, Charlie suggesting changes which in the opinion of the planning board are its duly authorized agent. I was thinking either Ken or Charlie. Charlie is suggesting that any, any change come to you for that determination. You decide whether it's major or minor.
That was a topic of discussion during mediation, that it's important, that we're not back in front of this room for any minor change, and that, that opportunity to delegate that existed, it was part of an mediation agreement, and as much as I enjoy hearing the case, I would need to do it on relatively minor issues. And it was discussed that night, we had a lot of conversations in the mediation process about certain issues being authorized for the town plan, Mr. Buckland, or consultant, if they do manage it.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a sidebar with Charlie. I, I don't think that was his intent at all, to, to have Mr. Fay or his team in front of you for small stuff, like Charlie.
Yeah. The things that I would not have a problem doing as a, as a field change might have to do with some portion of the road construction or the relocation of a catch basin a couple of feet one way or the other if they met an obstruction, that's not the kind of a change I'm talking about. But if, if you're talking about changes that will affect driveways, building size, and so forth, I think this board really should be the ones to, to listen to your reason why you, you wanna make that change and make the determination whether or not it's substantial enough to require a public hearing.
But, Mr. Rowley, we are talking about building sizes. It's been what we have been talking about, the ability to replace building size A with building size B, the building style C with building style D. So, those all will impact size.
Well, we've, we've addressed that already in condition 24, because the gentleman suggested last time that if the building is, distance to the next building is reduced by more than 25 percent, it's automatically a substantial change that has to come to the board, and that's in the decision.
Right. So, then, does that move this kind of, Mr. Rowley, to say all changes must come back to the board? Because I think we've addressed other areas, but that's not the case, so I don't...
My experience on this kind of matter is that it comes in, the intake officer is Ken, he looks at it, he, he will form an opinion. If he's, if he's unclear, he will call the chairman and say, what do you think? And if the chairman and Ken together and Charlie think that it's substantial, it's gonna come to the board, and if it's just minor, then it can be done.
I think the kind of changes I'm talking about are the kind of a change that would require a modification of the special permit. What you're talking about, Tim, are the adjustments to building locations and so forth, which change for size and so forth. Item, section 24, item 24 takes care of that, but there may be some other types of changes or adjustments that you may want to make that are not a part of that, and they may still be insubstantial, so that they don't, just bear me out for a second, that don't require a public hearing, and the board will make that determination that, no, those, the changes what you're doing is fine, but it does not require a public hearing. What it does require, though, is a modification of the special permit to be put on record, so that those changes, which are outside the scope of item 24, are documented somewhere. That's the kind of a thing I'm talking about. I don't know what they might be, off the top of my head. You might wanna decide that you're gonna relocate a portion of Bay Point Drive for some reason. That should not be up to me or, in my opinion, Mr. Buckland. That's a, that's a determination for the board to make, but so long as it's in the context of item 24, I have no problem, but if it's any other kind of a change, that's where I have the problem.
On page eight, so the last one.
Well, I think what it boils down to is whether or not every time there's a change, it has to come in and be placed on an open meeting agenda and a discussion every two weeks.
No. I think we've made enough explanation in the subdivision plan. It allows them the latitude that they're looking for during construction, and anything more than that, I think if you follow the outline that you described, where Ken looks at it and says, I'm not comfortable with this, I wanna take it to the board, I think that's probably how things are gonna play out anyway.
Yeah.
I think that's the normal course of events.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
And that's perfectly acceptable to us.
There you go.
You've got so much skeleton built into it already.
Yeah, I, I think we've put enough language in there that allows him the latitude he wants, but...
And I don't, I don't think any agent of the board is going to exercise wild and un, unadvisable discretion here. If it's, if it's, if there's any doubt in your mind, I'm sure you're gonna call the chairman and say, what do you think?
Absolutely.
There you go.
Could I ask a few questions about the document? And can I just start at page one? I just have little notes, and I don't have answers, I just have questions, real quickly.
Okay. Let's, let's finish Charlie's first, okay?
Okay.
Yeah. So, that was...
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, are, are we talking about a carve-out for paragraph 24 from the general condition paragraph that we were just reading?
I, I think we're, we're leaving the or its agent in, if that's what I think the consensus is, I hope the consensus is, because it would work like we just described. Ken would, if it's a simple thing, I'm, he's not gonna get in trouble, he'll do it, but if it's at all a close call, he's gonna call George.
That's the one that, that... Talking about paragraph 24, shouldn't the, the, in the first sentence where it says not less than 20 feet, which is originally said not less than 10.8 feet, to confirm with the... the recorded plan, that should now be 16 feet?
Yeah, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we're not getting.
We're on 24.
I'm not on to 16 feet.
I'm still on Charlie's number six now.
All right.
Stay with Charlie.
Charlie's number six is special conditions, item three. And Charlie wants line 10 to be revised to say, however, the special permit approval for phases two and three is conditioned on subsequent submission and approval of a definitive plan and site plan for phases two and three. So first thing we gotta do is count.
It's about a little over halfway down the.
I got it. Now I'm trying to compare.
Change shall be to is, I mean, you're.
Phase two and three.
It's a minor thing.
Shall be conditioned on subsequent submission and approval of a definitive subdivision plan and site plan. It already says that, doesn't it?
The next sentence says, however, the special permit approval for phases two and three shall be conditioned on subsequent submission and approval.
Of the definitive subdivision plan and site plan for phases two and three.
But it is conditioned herein, is it not?
He wants to remove shall be and make it is.
Is.
Ah, I see. Okay.
It's conditioned, huh?
Number seven, 21 on page eight.
That has to do with the same.
Yep.
Changes in paragraph 16.
Okay, so that's good. Two things. So number 24, now we're there, is going to say in the first sentence that no endorsement of the plan shall occur until the plan's modified so that building separation is at least 16 feet throughout. I think the rest of it can stay. Where building separation is equal to or greater than 20 feet, blah, 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 notwithstanding any reduction in building separation by more than 25 percent is considered a substantial change. So those two sentences would stay. And then I had a note about.
I'll read number 24 then. What is 16 feet? I listened to two hours and 48 minutes, and the majority of the tape was complaining about 10 foot eight back and forth. And then I listened to the battle royal tonight over 10 foot eight and 14 four and 15 six and 16 eleven, whatever. What are we making 16 feet? Everything, all these numbers?
There's four places that Charlie identified where there's 10 feet eight, 14 four, and...
15 six.
12 five.
15 something. So those now have to be revised before you endorse the plan to a minimum of 16 feet.
So, so then all these other 20 feet.
No, that can stay, because where it's more than 20 feet today, you can't go below 20 feet. That's what that says. And if you're moving the building locations, and I think you made the suggestion last time, and you're reducing the setback by more than 25 percent, it's a major change, and in no event can it go below 20 feet.
All right.
Okay.
I thought you were changing everything.
The other thing I had was, Mr. Serke had a comment back to me, number 18, in special conditions, a second as-built plan shall be provided to the planning board. And I think you had a question about that, so I put to be discussed there.
Yeah, thank you.
One of the, it was either Mr. Jew or Mr. Serke.
16 covers it, because we're talking about the roadwork. A has-built plan for the units, the landscaping, the parking, and the golf course is not something that's going to be, have a surety or a guarantee behind it. So I think this is just a, quite simply, a drafting area that was carried over from one of the very earliest approval.
What page and number?
When our draft, I know we went through it in the rewrite, we deleted it in its entirety because it is candidly, it's unnecessary.
I didn't know what to do with it, so I left it in, and I just put to be discussed.
It was, it's.
What page you want?
It's number 18, in the general conditions.
Page five.
I've got to be discussed. I don't have a problem with taking it out, I just didn't want to take it out without talking.
17 protects the town. That's what we're interested in doing with respect to the roads.
No.
No.
Okay. So, now, if I were done going through.
Real quick, real quickly. Page one, phase one, and then most of them are questions. We had discussed the current contractual arrangement between Mr. Fay's property and the condominium association, and existing condominium association, but now that there's gonna be another condo association, my question is, should in your first paragraph where you talk about phase one, should that contractual agreement be referenced in any way? And I don't need the answers right now. If I could, I'd just like to walk through this, because I just have five or six questions. And then, however you answer them is fine. So that's page one. Again, on the, I printed this from my computer, so it's not exactly like yours, but on page three, item five, under general conditions, I think consultant should be plural again. And I think the landscape.
Where is that, Mike?
Page four.
Oh, yeah.
Item four and five should probably reference the landscape consultant, and the peer review consultant should be plural. This is a question on page six, item three. In the middle of the paragraph, I'll just read the sentence that I just have a question. So, however, the special permit approval for phases two and three shall be conditioned on subsequent submission. And I don't know this answer, so I'm just asking, does this also require a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so should that be referenced?
No, stay long.
Okay.
And the shall be was changed to is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then, the next page, item 10, there's a typo, short neck road shall be gated and access limited. And on that same page, item 16, I still struggle with your language. I think I'm just much simpler than the language is. So the use of any portion of any condominium lot shall not be restricted for the benefit of the golf course. I'm just trying to confirm again that the condominium association is the priority and the golf course is the secondary party. I think you've written it probably correctly, because I think you tried to explain it to me before, but again, I'm struggling to understand it.
I think I took it from the old decision.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, I just want to make sure that the condo association's property is the protected property, and the golf course does not.
How about the word subject to, shall not be subject to?
I just, like I said, I read this language three or four times, and I'm still struggling with what you're trying to tell me, so.
Every time I look at that, I have a picture of somebody's back porch, a bunker, and a big X.
Yeah, so like I said, it's probably written correctly, I just wanted to make sure. And the last question I have is permanent monuments. I know we've talked about 300 feet, and it says rear lot lines, but did it not include side lot lines? I thought it included lot lines for the condominium association in general, but I could be in error. And they're just mostly questions.
Aren't any side lot lines anymore, like the way that was in the initial plan?
Right.
The idea behind the rear lot lines was to separate condominium use from the golf course, so that there would be some way of establishing where that line was, that's all.
Okay. And like I said, they're questions, they're not, I'm not trying to be adversarial in any way, just have questions. But the, I know Mr. Fay's addressed the contractual agreement with the condo association for the current sewer pump station. And I know we discussed it a few times, and I'm just wondering, should it be referenced in this agreement? Because there'll be a third party involved. I know initially the third party would be Mr. Fay again, but ultimately, it won't be Mr. Fay and his team, it will be the condo association, so.
I didn't write the original version.
Too long he had to read it, though.
It, what, I think what confuses me is not be restricted for the benefit of the golf course. I don't quite understand that language.
I think we should just say what we mean. The golf course shall not.
Infringe upon.
Infringe upon any portion of any condominium lot.
Correct.
All right, let's just say that.
It should be written simpler.
Would you, by that, you just mean by permanent play, not by me going down there and hitting it in people's yards, or using the roofs of bank shots?
I'm not always polite, sadly.
Put on scorecard, two-stroke penalty card. Sliding glass doors.
Yeah.
Mike, that's another reason for putting the monuments on the back line.
Yep, yep.
I played since I was 12, because I played hockey. All hockey players go. Same motion.
Are we ready for my hypothetical motion?
Sure.
There's also another typo. If you want to look at page six, under section four, Bay Point's submittals meet the all applicable bylaws, rules, and regulations. Either it's the word the or the word all, I don't think it's both.
Where is it, Mike?
Page six.
Yeah.
Section four.
Yeah.
Second to last line, right-hand side.
Yeah, yeah. Just take the out, right? Okay. All right, here, if I, if I.
One more point. The application date is January 31st, 2017.
On the first page?
On the first page.
Yeah. 131?
Correct.
Okay.
16.
If I were gonna make a motion, it would sound like this. Move to approve the special permit with the conditions as written in the draft and the following changes discussed this evening. Number one, insert an up-to-date document list. Number two, adopt Charlie's recommendations in his items one, two, three, six, and seven in the email of August 12th. Number three, amend condition, special condition 24 to establish a 16-foot minimum separation between buildings. Number four, change the reference to the board's consultants in general condition four and five to plural. Number five, change condition, special condition 15 to make it clear that there's no golf allowed on the condominium lot. Number six, strike in special condition four the word the. And number seven, add the application date of January 31st, 2017.
Striking special condition 18?
And strike, strike special condition 18.
Mr. Chairman?
General condition, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's general condition.
What, in your recitation there, what were you referring to on Charlie's comments on general conditions, first paragraph, line six? Did we leave it with authority and the authority for the agent or not?
Yeah, didn't change that. One, two, three, six, and seven, in Charlie's memo, not five. That was, that's five.
I thought, I thought from the discussion was that changes which in the opinion of the planning board or its agent.
Yeah, we're leaving that.
Leaving that in, okay. All right, okay, I just was reading from, from your email, okay.
Which means that Mr. Rowley's comment number five is excluded.
Correct. That one, number five's out.
I think that's, that's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, counsel worded that just the way I was thinking. I'd like to make that motion.
Can you come with me to other meetings that I have this morning?
I want to commend you, you do a very good impression of his voice.
That's it, that's it.
So, so moved with the, with the condition as, as read, stated.
They have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. I will have these down here tomorrow, because otherwise, I'll start forgetting. You have to vote, but you'll have it here tomorrow for, I'll get it to you in the afternoon. I have to be in Boston.
Our next meeting is the 28th, if you guys would like to come in and visit.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman.
Does it just, does it bind it to them?
Mr. Chairman. Don't, don't we have to vote? Didn't we vote before, we should have. Fay, take it, yeah.
Sign the plan?
Right.
Do they know that?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
You are, you are aware of the surety, everything has to be planned before the plans are signed up.
George, I think we have to vote. I think we voted pretty mature to closing the public hearing. We should revote.
All right, my pleasure.
After you close the public hearing, correct?
I don't know that.
You don't know, needs to be before or after?
No, I think we can.
You're sure?
Thank you, board.
Okay, I'll double check.
All right, because I was gonna say, if you want to vote now, we could do that.
There's no, there's no rule as to when to close the hearing, before or after the vote.
Good to see you, good to see you. Take care of your work.
Thank you, board.
You and I should be on negotiating.
I don't know. I'm butt.
Bill McKenna. Hope it works.
Yeah. His son just had a baby.
That'll work.
I looked, I saw you, I didn't want to interrupt, but I didn't recognize him, but he's a great guy. Very nice man.
For the natural angle. We'll do it for that.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Come again.
Congratulations.
How the boys doing? They must be in college by now, aren't they? We're still in session.
Yeah.
We all have one of those.
Alright, so we gotta read them.
My youngest, James, is actually packing tonight.
He gives us a few minutes to get through that.
He drives back and forth all the time. Fourteen, fifteen, he leaves like four, five o'clock in the afternoon. Hey, twenty years old, you know.
Who is she?
He loves us all, so.
What's her name?
Did you get the word that the surety was and it's?
So how you going with the town? Good, everything good?
Was it a blonde that came?
Did you save anything good today? Did you, did you save any world or anything away today?
You don't need that.
I will at the next meeting. They may be thankful.
Good to see you.
I'm not feeling the love anymore.
Okay, I would like to revisit item three B on the agenda, the bond approval and planned endorsement for Thatcher Lane. Mister.
Thatcher Lane. You, you did, but, but to endorse this subdivision plan, you need to have a covenant in place or a performance bond.
Yep.
And we have a report as to whether or not the selectmen approve the bond.
Maybe Mr. Slaven would be more reliable to, as he was.
Were we not waiting, were we not waiting for the applicant's written agreement with make peace? That plays into this? Is that not correct?
Was it contingency on the building permit?
Yeah.
That's what Rich Surkey was in there earlier saying had been done.
It's done.
Yes, it is.
And the selectmen have a copy?
So we just need to sign it, we don't need to vote or anything.
You did. Was adequate.
So we, we need everybody's majority signature on this?
Yeah, you need a majority.
George, is that, is that security for the construction of the Thatcher Lane extension?
Correct. Yes, it is.
And did you?
Is it a covenant?
It's a performance bond that was written by town council.
Okay.
Did, did.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Did Mr. Rowley confirm the value?
I haven't seen it. If, if you, if you got it, okay. It wasn't what I was expecting, but that's alright. It doesn't have to be.
You want more?
No, it's.
The form wasn't what you expected?
No, I just haven't seen it.
Oh.
I was not under the impression that it had anything to do with the selectmen's office. It was between you and the applicant. That's okay. Alright.
The, they get a say on insurance bonds. The acceptance and the release of same.
However, under state law, you also have to approve the, the form of the covenant when you, before you endorse the plan.
And that bond will stay in force until we so decide it's not yet needed anymore. Is that correct?
Right. There's, there's no.
Good language. We're posting bonds in five states right now, and it generally seems to be the same. We just ask the jurisdiction how they, they want the wording done, and we send it to the surety. And as long as it doesn't conflict with their practices, then it's usually just a straightforward sign-off.
We have bonds that were going to pay post office boxes.
Oh, I know.
Try and find nobody there.
Oh, yeah. Most towns have an approved insurance company list for bonds. That I dealt with when I sold bonds, so. So, good?
Good.
Charlie, I, I asked Bill, the conversation that you, you and he had about pricing. We discussed it internally and just decided we'd exceed the number by an extraordinary amount, round numbers. Thinking like eighty thousand dollars maybe to post that.
You gotta come visit, you gotta.
And you make up what's there, different size scales on bonds work.
Oh, yeah.
What's your day on Friday, Tuesday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's Mary. It makes me a bit, I can't get there, I'm there. And, and two nights a week. I do it myself, it doesn't go fast. I like seeing what I'm gonna fix.
Guys, ready to get started down there or what?
Yeah, I met the building commissioner, submitted our foundation plans and just taking site bids now. Will you be coming over, Charlie, at some point? Is that part of your role?
As soon as you've established a contractor, I'd like to be involved in the pre-construction meeting so that
Oh, sure.
we can decide what inspections I have to make.
Okay. Will Dave Aquina let you know?
Probably not Dave.
Okay. Um, but from his.
It could be Dave, but.
From his office though, someone will let you know.
To the deal.
If it's just me, I'll let you know.
I'd appreciate it if you would.
Sure.
He's concerned with, in terms of the inspections, is entirely dependent on you.
Sure. All that matters, we've discussed.
Send me an email letting you know when you're gonna have a pre-construction meeting and I'll show up.
Okay. I hope I can start clearing the site in the next three to four weeks.
Seems like a nice man.
I'm gonna get some poles relocated.
Yep. Yep, that's fine.
Alright.
Oh, I know.
Who is, who is the owner referred to here?
Uh, in the, in which language?
In the performance bond.
The town is who the bond is posted to.
Well, refers to an owner, it doesn't refer to, this was reviewed by council? This is submitted.
Provided to us by council.
Should be in the. Is that right, Charlie?
I will.
The town is called, the town is the owner in this.
Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bound, bound to the town of Wareham, Massachusetts here and after called the owner.
Okay, I missed the description of owner.
Yeah, I, I try to stay out of the legal realm. I just don't do it. Same as architects.
I guess I'll defer to council.
I don't have a legal opinion.
Oh, okay. Hand it down.
Can we send it to council for review?
My obligation to the selectmen, returning that, that, that package.
They run their own, we kept no, no dealings with the selectmen.
Was there any, um, pre-construction that needed to be scheduled for that? Any approval?
Any approvals? Yeah.
We should have a copy of that for your file. That they, that bond was approved by the planning board.
I'll get a copy from the selectors office tomorrow.
You have something in your file for when the time comes to.
Why is that? That's not true. That's, that's not even right.
Good luck.
I only know that because I.
Rest of luck. Thank you, thank you. Thanks.
Zoning articles for town meeting?
Right. Now, I, I sent around a solar bylaw by email.
Yes.
Which was written based on the the state model and the town of Fairhaven. Which I think is, is a pretty good one in comparison. If you remember, we had sent around a memo of comparison of different zoning regulations for solar bylaws. And this is in three parts. It has a modification of the table of uses for larger size solar energy facilities and onsite. And then it has the text for section five eighty. And then there is a third part, which is the definitions. To, to clarify the distinction between the large commercial ground-mounted solar energy facilities and onsite. This does not apply to roof-mounted solar energy facilities, PVs. Uh, that's a building code issue.
Now, do we address like canopy type operation where the roof is constructed only for the purpose of
Right.
mounting solar panels?
I'll have to.
Or is that a building code too?
That, that's a structure, and that would be building code.
Those are, yeah, but those are kind of new and popping up, and they're not always just a simple little carport, so.
You know, was he solar panels, was he spacking lots?
Over. Over, you know. So that, that definitely needs to be addressed, Mr. Buckman.
So we had need a, a third, third category.
Being very popular, and it, and it's a good use, it's just, we should probably know what we're getting into.
Yeah, in reading this.
Well, I think some of the grants are encouraging that type of construction.
Yes.
Sure, but in reading this and talking about, referring to the zoning codes, sections six and seven, those refer to buildings. We have a different animal here. And I think some thought needs to go into defining the regulations to fit the new animal. There are no windows, there's no, it's a different, different kind of thing.
It's a structure though.
They're all referring to that.
Yeah.
So, is this ready to go before the town, or do we have a chance to work at it?
No, you have to go through a public hearing process. What I'm recommending is that you go into a public hearing, schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Discuss, discuss a draft.
This draft?
This draft.
Or, or.
Or something that I can modify and add in the, yes, the, these other structures.
Yes.
The other thing I had difficulty with trying to visualize, I, I went online to look for large solar. It's, it's all over the place in terms of what one can do. And then the related question too, some of the roof-mounted stuff is pretty ugly. And is there any way to have, to control how that happens? I'm all for the idea of solar, of using solar energy, but it.
The roof-mounted stuff is changing, so technology is catching up.
The question is whether or not you want to set up a public hearing to discuss.
I think it's important.
Are there other items that are gonna be proposed by that committee that's?
Yeah, there was a, there was a reconsification and technical amendments to the, to the total byla, to the whole bylaw. Where some, some spelling errors and grammatical problems were be, to be corrected. The, the question there was how we actually go about advertising that. And I asked town council to come up with a recommendation as to how we'd advertise a wholesale change without publishing, publishing the whole bylaw again as part of that, of that change. He has not gotten back to me on that yet.
That's what we're gonna say. No.
The other, the other change that I would like you to consider is a change in the table of uses. There are blank spaces in that. There are potentially some several changes in the, in the lines, the descriptions that I'd like you to consider as well. So, that would be a third. Third hearing.
And these have to be done by what date?
You have to hold the hearing within sixty-five days of town meeting. Fourteen days for the submittal of, of recommendations.
Fourteen days before town meeting, you have to have a public hearing usually. But you, you basically have to get the articles in, or at least a holder shortly. Because the board of selectmen has to review the articles for inclusion in the warrant as well.
Right.
And then, then we vote, you know, and the fin come votes favorable, not favorable action.
What's the completion drop dead date?
For getting the articles submitted with the hold. I think we, I think we're gonna move it back a little bit.
You were.
Date was actually gonna be like now.
Oh.
Right.
We're moving it back to September eighth, if I'm not mistaken.
September tenth, I thought, yeah.
Probably eighth or, or tenth.
Too much time.
So we need to hold it pretty quick. Or you need to at least get a placeholder put in place.
Yeah.
So the board of selectmen has something to vote to include or not.
Mr. Buckman, can you complete the project if the placeholder is put in place?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Okay.
So, do you want to go ahead with the public hearing?
I, I would. I think it's important.
Okay.
It's definitely something that's gonna be active in the future. It's already active, but.
What are you looking at? First meeting in September or? Oh, second. Yep, first is too soon.
The, I believe the first is.
Was it eighty-five percenters? There's a joke, Charlie. My son goes back to school, he's in Columbia, South Carolina. Actually, he's packing right now.
If you don't have them written yet, you won't hit that mark.
Yeah, we can have the. We can have the hearing the first, the first session in September, which is September eleventh. It's also Patriots Day by this calendar.
Not in this. It's not a holiday in this realm.
Patriots Day?
Patriot Day, singular. It's November eleventh. I mean, September eleventh.
So September eleventh would be the hearing date.
You can get that advertised and, that quick?
Yeah.
Okay. September eleventh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Uh, I would ask for some action on the minutes of July twenty-fourth.
I didn't, I didn't read those, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to wait long enough for me to read them? I'm a slow reader.
How far along were you?
It's page two. It's on page two. Plus, there's so much in it, to be honest with you. I don't think I could remember it all anyways.
Hey, you wanna buy some goats? My cousin got some for sale.
Just to feed them?
Yeah, just let them, well, they'll eat the poison ivy and all that stuff. Get some chickens, they're good for the ticks. Get eggs.
Like Bob, Bob White quail, really good for ticks.
Better than that is guinea hens. They're basically good watchdogs. Sleep in the trees. Each from the city, you wouldn't know what to do with them.
Your grandkids will love them.
You have plenty of grandkids now, that's good for them.
Yeah, you got plenty of grandkids now. Let's quit from, go for the animals. We're going to puppies. Puppies, cows, you got pigs. Mr. Hill next door will help you out.
Oh, yeah.
He's a nice guy, I guess. Donkeys.
Are you ever gonna get around to the executive session minutes as well?
Well, I was gonna point out that if people have reviewed them, I don't think we need to go into executive session at this point to...
No, you don't.
Approve them.
Did you read it?
Yeah. Entertained a motion to, uh, accept the minutes for August fourteenth?
No, July twenty-fourth.
July twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry. As written.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will vote, uh, in the affirmative on those after watching the, the meeting and reading minutes and what have you. Uh, I wasn't in attendance that night, but haven't seen it nor I agree with the writing of the minutes.
That's what we answered, right? You probably did it at work, right?
Oh. I did it on late night time.
Okay. And if you recall, we've got a stack of executive session minutes going back a ways from, the mediation with Bay Point. Well, there's about three sets of minutes here, so if you have those in your possession and can review them for the next meeting, we can vote on those and get them off the table.
I'm gonna take that together in the next meeting, right?
Hmm.
Entertained a motion, Mr. Jen?
Second.
I would. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed?